Motion to adopt the agenda.
I move to adopt the agenda.
Second?
Second.
On the favor?
I oppose.
It's on move. Move the instance, interview of applicant for Ward Two. I asked Amanda Breeden to take care of that now and guide us through it.
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening. Welcome to the candidate interviews for the Ward Two vacancy on the Board of Mayor and Alderman. I am Amanda Bruton, Human Resources Director for the city, and I will be facilitating the interviews tonight. Here are the ground rules that were given to the candidates for tonight. Each candidate will be given two minutes to respond to each question. Our timekeeper, Derek Watson, Administrative Services Director, who is seated behind the board, will raise a 30 seconds card to ward the candidates when 30 seconds remain, and a stop card when time is up. The candidate must immediately conclude his or her remarks at this time. Time limits are closely followed to ensure fairness to all candidates. Each candidate will be asked to answer the same question before I will proceed to the next question. The first candidate to answer a question will rotate between each question. For example, Ms. Johnson will start us off by answering the first question, Ms. Mitchell the second, and so on. At the end of the process, each candidate will have two minutes to provide a closing statement to the Board of Mayor and Alderman. Candidates, if you would like me to repeat the question, please just ask. Also, do not feel that you have to use up the entire two minutes for a response. If any member of the board has a follow-up question to a candidate's response or requires clarification, please rate this question card that has been provided to you. We expect the audience to give each speaker an opportunity to be heard. In deference to our time limit, please hold your applause until the end of the evening. We'll begin questions now with Ms. Johnson. I'm going to read the definition of immediate family per the City of White House policy. An immediate family member includes spouse, children, parents, parents-in-law, children-in-law, brothers, sisters, brother-in-law, and sisters-in-law. Do you have any immediate family member employed by the City of White House?
You're good.
Okay. No, I do not.
I do not.
I do not.
I do not.
What do you think are the roles and responsibilities of an Alderman is in our community? Ms. Mitchell?
I feel that the role of the Alderman is to represent the constituents of the ward that they represent. I feel that they should listen to the questions and concerns, address it with the Board of Mayor and Alderman, and open for discussion, so we make sure that we're providing the best support to the community and what the community wants to see, and let's see how the future of our community grows.
I feel that the Alderman would be a safeguard, or to safeguard citizens' interests, and also represent the ward that they're located.
An Alderman for the city should represent the constituents of its ward as well as the city, have a fiscal responsibility to the constituents and the city, and bring community into the process, and fair and equal time for all.
Hi. So, I believe that a city councilman or Alderman is a representative for their constituents, and that they should listen to their constituents and help to bring life, the vision that they have for their city, and just protecting their interests.
Thank you. Mr. Payne, what preparations have you made or backgrounds you have that make you the best person to represent the 13,000 citizens of the City of White House?
Preparations? Not too many preparations, but my background is, I'm an insurance adjuster. I deal with people. I'm around people all the time. I'm involved in different building codes and everything when reconstruction happens. I feel like I'm a people person. I'm willing to listen to people. I'm willing to have a relationship with people, regardless of who you are. I'm willing to listen, not just to be heard, and I'm willing to go to bat for the people in my community.
This process actually started for me when I was in third grade, when I was asked what I wanted to be when I grew up, and I said I wanted to be the president of my city. I was in third grade. Also, when I was in fifth grade, I would come and visit my dad. I started my life in Illinois. My dad lived here. And I volunteered at the library here every summer from fifth grade through eighth grade. I wanted to do a decimal system and got familiar with microfiche film from Miss Barbara Melton. So, it was before. It was the Chamber of Commerce. Then, as I grew up, I moved away, but then I moved back. I raised my kids here. I have three boys. One is in the Navy, and I'm very proud of that. I'm very involved in the community. I was president of White House Youth Soccer for 10 years. I also started a special needs soccer league for our city and surrounding areas, which garnered media attention and brought tax revenue to our community. I've been involved in Rotary. I'm currently on the Chamber of Commerce Board. I've been involved in the American Legion Auxiliary. So, I'm very involved. I can't wait to be a part of the process.
So, I have been a member of this community for almost all of my life. I was born in Harrisonville, raised in Billupsburg for the early years of my life, and then moved to White House. But I even attended Vanetta's Karate when I was a child, came up during the weekends, fed apples, started to walkie-horses, and then we moved here permanently in 1992, and haven't left since, only just to go to college. And so, I have three different professions. I'm actually a merchandiser for plants, and then also a botanist, and then also a photographer. And so, even though I work mostly with plants and nature, it still really requires me to be a people person. I have to have diplomacy when I require, have to talk to managers at Walmart, because that's where merchandise at. And then also, when I approach landowners to collect off their land wildflower seeds, because that's what I do as a botanist, I have to approach them very nicely and get their permission and help. So, you know, being able to be diplomatic is really important to me. And then, so I also have this unique position to have a vision for the city, to bring, to help mitigate the loss of nature in our city, and to bring back a sense of worldness that brought people here in the first place. And I'm just trying to help better our community in so many different ways. I've had different clubs that I started, but because of the pandemic, they had to be ended. So, thank you.
You'll learn this pretty quickly about me. I am a newer resident to White House. I've been here just about two years. But my family and I chose this community for exactly the reason I hear all of my friends say that they chose this community. So, while most of the time that I've been here has been during the pandemic, there haven't been a lot of options for me to become overly involved in organizations in White House yet. But I have reached out to the Rotary Club and to an art organization here as well. I'd like to become involved in that. So, I'm working on discussing the options for those. But my past experience is, I have a master's degree in historic preservation and with an emphasis in urban planning. I've always been very civic-minded. My family raised me to become as involved in every community that I ever lived in. So, from small town to big city, I've always found a way to become involved. So, I've been on boards of historic preservation commissions. I was a leader of, a director of a historic preservation organization that had a say in urban and community development. I grew up in a small town, very similar to White House, that was experiencing growing pains. So, I'm very familiar with what White House is currently going through. So, those, and you know, I've just spent a lot of time educating myself on each community that I live in, and I'm very proud to live here in White House, Tennessee right now.
Ms. Spicer, from your perspective, are you comfortable with policy decisions and vision you have seen from the Board of Mayor and Alderman these past few years? If not, and you had the power to change one thing, what would you like to see different?
So, first of all, I want to start by saying that the board has done a good job of managing growth as much as it possibly can. However, there is improvement to be made, and I think part of that could be in some of the rezoning that we approve continuously. We don't always have to approve NCPUR all the time. Not everything is city-centered. So, I think that is something that we could improve upon. I understand people cannot, we can't tell people they can't sell their land and what they can do with it. But we don't have to build 800 houses in a small plot of land every single time. Thank you.
I understand that it is really a difficult position to be on a board or a mayor. You really have to strike a balance between the public interest and growth. Of course, you cannot tell private landowners what they can and cannot do on their own land. But we can always try to mitigate and plan better. And one of the things that I really would love for us to do a different way in the city is to have a little more transparency for the landowners and the homeowners by mailing them any kind of zoning changes that might be affected, like adjacent to their land, and affect them directly. I know that I would appreciate that because it felt like a little surprise and when seeing all the development happening on Sage Road, because that's with Cardinal. And so, we just got in the mailer. I think I would have been a little bit happier about that. But anyway, like, like I said, it's a really hard balance to make sure you don't overstep your constituents, too. So, if we can have a little more transparency in that way, I'd really appreciate it.
I think the Board of Mayor and Alderman have an awesome responsibility to the citizens of White House and the surrounding communities. The decisions that are made on the board are, affect the surrounding communities as well. And I think that you have been, the current board and mayor, have been presented with a lot of challenges, especially in more recent years with all the zoning changes, change requests. I know it's important to have developers here and to boost our economy, and I think that's fantastic, but there has to be a balance as well. And I'd love to just be a fresh set of eyes and just to be able to review. And I love the master plan for the City of White House, and I want to make sure that we're staying within that. I understand that it's subject to change based on, you know, who's presenting different options that maybe weren't thought of during the making of the plan. But the citizens were a part of that plan, and their voice was heard in that they don't want such big growth happening so quickly. So, I just want to make sure that we're managing that, but still growing and thriving as a community and, you know, boosting our economy and providing housing for people to work in our businesses. So, that's, I think that's all I have to say.
I've been satisfied with the Alderman and mayor on the decisions that have been made. I'm excited for the growth of the city. I do, I'm still learning a lot of things as far as zoning and how that works and things of that nature. But as long as we're taking in consideration everyone's voice to be heard and their concerns, like I said earlier, to listen and not just to be heard. So, I think if we can just take into consideration to everyone on their needs.
Ms. Johnson, what civic organizations have you been a member of either in the City of White House or elsewhere?
Well, there weren't any organizations that were available for me here in the city that really fulfilled my interests. And so, I approached the director of the library and started a club, two clubs actually. So, I started a photography club and a native plant garden club. And we did that successfully for 14 months before the pandemic hit. And so, we'd have monthly meetings, and it was actually really fun. Got to meet a lot of people in the community and have people who would regularly show up. And I would hold for the garden club in the autumn. We would give out seeds to the community, and those were always the biggest events, or biggest turnout of those events. And donated seeds to our seed bank at the library also. But otherwise, like, I would really love to be able to start my clubs back up again. I just don't know where we are in that process right now because of still things happening. But anyway, I started my own.
Well, I kind of touched on this already. I moved here just before the pandemic, so I haven't really had the opportunity to join a lot of the clubs that are available. So, I started to, now that things seem to be evening out a little bit, I am interested in becoming more involved in the community with the Rotary Club and with this art organization. And I've also recently joined a garden club that just started about a week ago. So, because I have a big passion for that as well. And, you know, outside of that, I've become very heavily involved in animal rescue. So, I'm very involved with an organization in Mount Juliet called White House Animal Refuge. So, I foster dogs. I participate in adoption events. I help place dogs with families, that type of thing. So, that's been my, kind of my easing into community involvement. While it's not specifically White House-related, it is a passion of mine. So, you know, I really, I feel like that has been a really good introduction for me to become more involved.
I hadn't really joined any clubs. I'm involved in the community with my four kids, two that go to White House Heritage. I'm involved in a lot of sports-related activities. Felton mentioned earlier, I was born and raised here in White House, you know. Grandfather's sharecropper's here in the early 70s. But as far as clubs, I hadn't joined any clubs. I do want to be active in the community. That's why I'm here today. I don't, there's a lot of things I need to learn. But I do, I mean, I just seen this opportunity, and I would just like to be part of the community.
I also touched on this earlier. I've been a member of Rotary, currently a board member for the Chamber. I was the president of White House Youth Soccer for 10 years and then transferred to the sponsorship coordinator. I was in charge and coached some sidekicks, which is a special needs soccer league. And I have served on several school sport league or sport boards as well. I've coached the community. I've done baseball, basketball, soccer. And I'm also a graduate of White House High School.
Ms. Mitchell, have you served on any board or commissions in the City of White House or elsewhere?
Not specifically. In my role as the director of the Historic Preservation Organization in Illinois, I sat on the commission meetings, but I wasn't actually an actual member of it. I was a consulting member, but other than that, I have not. But I'm hoping that does not deter anybody's decision with me because it doesn't deter the fact that I am passionate about civic duty and would love the opportunity to learn in this environment, in the community that I call home.
I have not served on any boards here. I've served on a board at church, a deacon board, New Heights Church in Billisville, and also Year's Pass Life Center here in White House.
I think I already answered that question, so I won't waste your time again.
Actually, no, I have not. I have applied. I've applied to leisure circles board. I've applied to the main commission board and his own commission board. But as frustrated as I am not being on it, I don't make those decisions. So, anyway, I would love to be able to be on anything to help out with my community. I have been really passionate about the city, and I really love my city. And so, anyway, I can be helpful. That's what I'm going to do.
Mr. Payne, the Board of Mayor and Alderman, the Board of Mayor and Alderman meet in regular session on the third Thursday of each month at 7:00 P.M. Is this a conflict with your schedule to attend?
No, not at all.
No, ma'am.
I love evenings, so no, it's not a problem at all.
I have no other commitments.
Ms. Spicer, if the board has to schedule a study session or a special called meeting, what day of the week and what time of day would be best for you to attend?
Evening after work hours and any day other than the weekends probably, which I think most people would not rather be here on the weekend.
My schedule is super flexible. Being a merchandiser, I kind of set my own hours. As a botanist, I set my own hours. As a photographer, I set my own hours. The only commitment that I do have is three hours of work that I have to do on Saturdays during the spring season. But other than that, like, it's wide open.
I'm available days typically anytime after 5:00 P.M. I work from home full-time, but my schedule is somewhat flexible. If it's needed that I come in during business hours, I most likely can make it work. I'm usually also typically available on weekends as needed.
I'm very flexible as well, Monday through Friday after work hours.
Ms. Johnson, each board member also serves on a minimum of one other board or commission in the City of White House. This would require attendance at evening meetings. Would your schedule allow for you to serve on one or more of these boards or commissions?
Yes, absolutely.
Yes.
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 Excuse me. Ms. Mitchell, what leadership role have you had in your workplace or in the community?
Well, I've had many jobs, but I was a manager at my current position at my current job. I hold an international logistics for international corporations. So, I was managing a team of, I think about 15 people, and worked with various people in that capacity with, you know, senior leadership down to assistants. So, I have that experience. I kind of talked up a thing. And so, I do have some management and leadership experience. And as I mentioned before, I was a director of a historic preservation organization for more than five years. So, that included fundraising and community involvement and throwing events together, things like that. And I enjoyed every second of it.
Been a team lead for my district for nationwide insurance. There've been mutual insurance I worked for presently as an adjuster, just a team lead as educating other adjusters on claims process and also agents, and a lot of farmers in western Kentucky as well.
I have been in several leadership roles through my life. Started the student council when I was in high school, and then moved over to my regular daytime job, which is in banking. I've been a manager. I've been a supervisor. I've also been president of White House Youth Soccer. And we grew that leadership, or we grew that league from 167 kids when I started to now we have it for 1,200. So, that was, that's probably the longest leadership role that I held, was for 10 years. And I'm very proud of that. Thank you.
Normally, I'm a very independent worker, especially with the roles that I have. However, during the spring season with my job, I do garden center merchandising. And so, I cover seven different stores across the mid-state here. And I cannot do all that work by myself. So, I hire a team of people who I believe are the best for this job of merchandising different plants, different garden centers. And so, every year, every spring, I have a team of about five to seven people who work under me, and I train individually, and we all work together to make things right for Walmarts. And so, otherwise, like, you know, when I, I took the leadership, the initiative, to start my own clubs here in the city, and every month I would have to come up with topics. And so, I was leading groups for that every month. Otherwise, like, no, I don't have any other kind of leadership roles other than having been in Girl Scouts. But that was a lot, you know. That was a long time ago now. But I'm definitely glad to be able to show my leadership skills here in the city.
Mr. Payne, why do you want to serve as an Alderman for the City of White House?
As I said earlier, I do want to be involved in my community. I just see this as an opportunity to be more deeper involved in the community. I mean, I have a passion to listen to people and to just be engaged with, fellowship with people. And I just feel like this is an opportunity to be, serve my community. I know a lot of people in the community from when I grew up, and add new people that's moved to the community. So, I just feel like this would be a great opportunity for me to do that.
Since I have been so involved in the community, it just seems like a natural step to step into our local government. It's been a passion of mine since a very young age. After attending some meetings, I now read every minute of every meeting that we have for the Alderman. I've also attended major service board meetings. I've attended study sessions. I've had opportunities to speak at Mayor and Board of Alderman meetings and be heard. And now, it's just time for me to be able to be involved in helping the decision-making.
Every single city around in the mid-state area is experiencing the same challenges we are experiencing. We've seen disasters happen in other places, and we've seen smart growth happen in others. And I want to be here to help us direct the city into a smart path. And I feel like that there are a lot of people here who feel that they're not being heard. And I want to tell you, you are being heard. I'm here because of you all. And, you know, I realize that this is a very beautiful city, and people want to come here, but we cannot forget about our faithful community members who've been here for decades. And so, striking a balance between those is really important to me. And I have such a passion for the city. I've lived here all my life. It's been a part of my life. And I just want to see the best for our community.
Thank you. So, my passion lies in civic duty. And while I am a newer resident, I think I can be the voice of the newer residents of White House and the residents who have been here, lifelong residents. I was born and raised in a small community, very similar to White House. I understand what everybody is going through, but I also understand that positive growth needs to happen. And I'd love to be the person who represents our constituents and makes their voices heard so we can actually do our duty as civic leaders, so they can feel that they are being listened to. I'm an excellent listener. I love, I love talking with people. I do it, I do it all day. But I would love to be that next fresh voice, the fresh set of eyes in the City of White House with respect to everything that White House has been in the past, to everything White House can be in the future.
Ms. Spicer, what skills, qualities, or experiences have you had that will help you in your role as Alderman?
I'm good at talking to people. I think that's very important if you're an Alderman. You want to be able to call your people back. You want to be able to be knowledgeable of the city process. I'm smart. I know that's, you know, you shouldn't teach your own horn. It's hard for me to do that. But I Um, but I'm also very involved in the community. I think that's important. People know me, they know my face. Um, a lot of people in the crowd I know today, and I thank you for being here. Um, I invited people to this meeting today. I also think that's important. You know, that I do want people to be involved in the process. I think I've, I think that's one quality I possess is to get people to be able to come and be a part of the process, and I think that's important. Thank you.
So I'm a highly approachable person. I love talking to people. Um, sometimes you can't get in the chat up. Um, but one of the major things that I, I know that an Alderman would have to be doing is to be diplomatic. You have to have, um, a professional attitude towards both the developers and to your community. Um, having been a liaison between a merchandising company and Walmart, I have to be a liaison to, to bring about the vision that corporate Walmart has that somehow gets lost, um, to the individual stores. And so I have to gently prod and remind, um, store managers of what their duty is to their corporation. Um, I have a master's in science and have ability to effectively communicate and have an independent spirit to take initiative on matters that maybe nobody else is paying attention to.
Uh, I'd like to say that I'm a, I guess this is the toot your own horn right here. Um, I am a good listener. Um, I feel that I'm really responsive to, um, phone calls, text messages, concerns. And I'm a very responsible person as well. Um, I tend, have a tendency to make people very comfortable at all levels. Um, you know, as I said, in my, in my position, I work with senior leadership. I work with truck drivers. I work with, um, you know, people of all levels. Um, so I feel that I can, I can, I don't want to say change who I am, but I, I know how to communicate with people of all backgrounds. And, uh, I pride myself in being able to be a good communicator and an excellent listener and be respectful of everybody's opinions, um, and listening. And, um, I also don't, I, I don't like, I, I would be the person to correct fact versus fiction. So there's a lot of rumors out there, um, that go along, you know, we'll say social media. Um, it bothers me so much that there's so much fiction out there, and I would love to just kind of step up and say, that's, that's not true. Let me tell you how it really is. Or let me let you know, and let's see if we can get your opinion, you know, directed in the right way. Or let's see what we can do to, um, you know, how can you become active in the community? And how can you help change? So, um, I think that's about all I have to say.
I feel like I'm very approachable. Um, uh, I, I take my time now that, I mean, at an older age, I take my time to hear and listen to people. And, uh, I'm not quick to put in my response before I hear and listen and understand where they're coming from. And, um, as a claims adjuster, I, I have the large claims, small claims, farmers, uh, claims, uh, Mayfield, Kentucky. I mean, I, I have to communicate in such a way, even when it's not good news, uh, to where they can hear and understand the process that they're going through. And I just feel like communication is very important. I mean, especially nowadays, I mean, just everything's so fast-paced. Uh, and I've learned in my own relationships, even at home with my wife, it's just, you, you have to hear, listen first and, and then respond. But your response is not always right. So, um, I, I just think communication is, is, uh, very important and being approachable.
Ms. Johnson, an angry citizen calls you at 10:00 P.M. because their backyard is flooded after an all-day rain event. How would you handle this situation?
First of all, let them rant. Let them get it out because they're most likely just very frustrated at the moment. And so listen to their problems. The next day, I'd probably come by and try to check it out in person and see what we can do, work with the city. Um, I could, I think that would be in the Public Works Department who would help out with that. And, um, see if I can help them with mitigating the flood damage. And as a botanist, I realize that there are ways that we can help mitigate, uh, flooding, um, by using native plants in the right, right places to create rain gardens. And so I think that if we took that very seriously, the process, uh, there's a lot of flooding actually across the city, um, because this area used to be a wetland prairie. And so because of our natural geography, um, we do have to start thinking better about how to mitigate those, um, that damage. And bringing back native vegetation is going to be the way, a key to helping it. Um, but as far as like, how do I handle this call? I would definitely just listen to their concerns first.
Uh, like her, I would also listen. Just let them get everything out that they want to say because I understand how frustrating and stressful that situation is for anybody in that situation. Um, but then I would make recommendations for how we can deal with it and what the next steps would be. Um, so I'd obviously educate myself on what those next steps would be. But, um, like her also, I would also love to go to the, to the person's house to see the damage, if at all possible, to see what they're talking about. Can't, help them, direct them to the correct people to communicate with to get that problem fixed. And then I'd also look at the bigger picture. So is this a common thing at this house or in this neighborhood or in this subdivision? Or, you know, and then look to see what we as, as community members and as the City of White House can do to ensure that this is not a continuing problem. So I look for a long-term solution in addition to the short-term solution of listening to that person and seeing, um, you know, how we can, how we can help them in that moment. And then the bigger picture, which they probably don't want to hear at the time, but what I can do in the background to fix the bigger issue as well, whatever that may look like, like in that situation.
You repeat the question?
Of course.
An angry citizen calls you at 10:00 P.M. because their backyard is flooded after an all-day rain event. How would you handle this situation?
First of all, I'll ask, um, is everyone okay? Um, did they have any pets or anything that, or people that were involved? Uh, I guess how high the waters came up, I'll ask if everybody's okay. And I'll see if there's any emergency services that they need, uh, as far as mitigating, uh, their damages. Um, and I'll, I'll listen to their concerns. And, uh, also, I'll, I'll ask them if they have a flood insurance policy as well. Because I mean, that, that'd help out as well. Or, and calling in a claim for their, uh, home as well. Um, but the main thing is just to see if everybody's okay, to make sure that, um, to address any other concerns that they have concerning their property and how the flooding happened. Was it all they rained, or was it a, a drain or something that came from a different direction? Or was it a drain that was designed, that was, uh, installed that causes them to get flooded at this time? So I'll try to get all the facts, uh, of, of the matter. And then we'll go to, for a resolution after that.
I would listen to the person on the other end of the call and try to calm them down. I would then remind them that we have an app that you can put a request in for Public Works to come by and check the drains in the subdivision or local area that they live in. I'd also give them the emergency contact number that the city offers on the website. I'd make sure I got their name, their phone number, their address, so that I could check to make sure what ward they're in. Because if they're not in my ward, I would want their Alderman to know. And I would follow up with Public Works to make sure that something happened in regards to the complaint that had been put in. And I would also follow up with the individual.
Ms. Mitchell, one of the other Aldermen calls you and wants to discuss an item on the agenda for the upcoming Board of Mayor and Alderman meeting. What would you do?
Well, if it's allowed to discuss issues amongst each other, um, I'm honestly not sure. I, I'm not going to lie and tell you I know exactly how your board is set up. But, um, if it's allowed, I would absolutely love to speak about it. But I don't want to exclude the other board members, so I'd ask if we can include them. Um, I wouldn't, I would want to remain transparent with the rest of the board members if I weren't to have a one-on-one discussion with another Alderman. Um, because I don't think that it's healthy to, you have to work together as a team. And I don't think that, you know, having one or two people off on their own, fighting their own battles against the rest of the team, that's not going to be good for anybody, not for the board, the mayor, or the citizens, or our constituents. So I would make sure that, um, we remain completely transparent if a meeting outside of our regular meetings is held regarding any issue.
Same here. I would, um, I would avoid the conversation until everyone on the board is available to, uh, listen in here. So we can all put our hands together. I don't know the process, but I, I would rather have that conversation with everyone.
Okay, I can answer your question down here, guys. So in, when COVID happened, I decided to go back to school and I got to take a law class. And there is something called the sunshine law. We are not allowed to talk to each other before a board meeting. We can talk at the board meeting. We can take a pause, get Valerie, and we can go talk behind closed doors together. But we are not to discuss anything with each other prior to that meeting. Thank you.
All right, well, that answers that. I guess I got the easy one. Um, but personally, yes, I could totally understand why the sunshine law exists. Obviously transparency is very important and it's important to me. And, um, also it, it breeds mistrust between the board and the mayor and then also within the community. Um, secret collaborations are not something that I would ever want to have happen.
Mr. Payne, would you like to provide a closing statement to the board regarding why you are the best individual to fill the Alderman position?
I, I mean, I, I, I'm authentic. I'm just, um, I, I want to be here. I want to be on the board, but if not, I'm still going to be involved in the community. Uh, I'm still going to be me and I'm still going to be involved, uh, in the community. Got good candidates up here, can't go wrong. But I, I feel like this is a time for me to, uh, do more than, you know? I have good fellowship in the community, but I, I think it's time for me to do more than just that. And, um, I don't know, I just, uh, I, I'm, I'm willing to learn and I want to learn. And I want to understand some things, and I want to understand some processes that are going on in the community, with, especially with the growth. I mean, I grew up here when it was just people who looked like a red light, you know? And, uh, I mean, when, when I, I lived here and I moved back in 2006 from Texas and, I mean, I, some of the back roads in the place, you cut tobacco, you know? There were neighborhoods, and I didn't, I was lost. So, I mean, I just, I want to be involved in this process now. Um, I got four young kids, uh, and I, I want to be involved in this process and I'm ready to see, um, uh, the growth in this community as well.
Okay, I gotta say all this in two minutes. Um, I love White House. It's where I grew up. It's where I'm raising my children. It's where I want my children to raise their children and then my grandchildren to raise their children. Um, community is important to me. I try to stay very involved. I try to be a part of everything that I possibly can. Sometimes I don't know when to say no, and that's my own fault. I'm working on it. Um, I have been planning to be an Alderman for years. I didn't live in the city limits, now I do. I was involved before I lived in the city limits. This means for me than I can even put into words. So even if you don't pick me, I'll be running for election. So the people of White House will have to tell me no, I can't do it. Um, but please understand that diversity is also important to me. There's only been one other woman that I know of that's been a part of your board, and that was Lisa Bellin. And I believe she was appointed as well, not voted. But maybe someday we can have a voter person up there. But if not, either way, you'll see me again. Thank you.
Well, um, the best person, I don't know. I think that we have really amazing candidates up here. Uh, first of all, I want to give you, um, like, a plug because, you know, there's several thousand people who could have applied for this position, and we were the only ones who did. So way to go, guys. And then, um, I really do feel very passionate about this city. Um, lived here all my life, basically. And, um, I've seen so much change over the years. And one of the things that, um, I feel like that most people, like, it breaks people's hearts to see farmland disappear. It breaks people's hearts to see, um, trees being cut down that they thought were beautiful. And so if we can help, like, bring back some of that rural character in any kind of way by bringing back native vegetation, I would really love to have that opportunity to express those concerns and to bring that vision to the city. And, um, to, um, make it a more walkable and enjoyable place to just get outside and get exercise and sunshine. It's a proven fact that nature actually, uh, like, helps alleviate depression and it physically heals people's bodies, being able to have places to enjoy the outdoors. And so, um, actually, if you all want to appoint me, I really will probably run for the, uh, for the position, um, because I really do feel that passionate about it. And so, you know, I just really want to be an advocate for the citizens of White House. Thank you.
Um, as mentioned, while I am a newer resident, that does not deter from the fact that I am passionate about the City of White House. My family chose to live here out of literally everywhere in the country. We both, my husband and I, both work from home. Um, we visited communities all over the country, and this is the exact place that we wanted to live. Um, it's an amazing community. People are friendly, they're outgoing, um, they're welcoming, and, um, we plan to live here for the rest of our lives. And I want to be a voice in that community. I want to be the voice to make my neighbors happy about where they live and the direction that White House is going. Um, as I said, I understand that, that growth is inevitable. So let's just discuss the growth and, and make sure everybody's comfortable why these decisions are being made for the betterment of the community. Um, and I also sort of feel that, you know, White House is a small town that is growing, but small town doesn't mean size necessarily. It's loyalty to local businesses. It's, um, the desire to meet and know your neighbors. Um, and it's community involvement. And all of these are ways to keep the community together. And I would be absolutely incredibly proud to be part of the continued improvement and growth and the, the future of the City of White House. And I want to be the, the voice of the people of my ward and of the city. And, um, there are amazing candidates up here. I don't think we can go wrong. So, um, I appreciate all of the time that you've given us and, um, thank you.
Thank you all. I appreciate your time. If we could get a round of applause for the candidates. Mayor, I'll turn the meeting back to you.
That is basically the end of our program. Now, I do want to thank, you know, for the quality of people you are and your concern for the city. And I, I hope that something catches on and there's a lot more people that are involved in what's going on up here. I've been here a third year, four years as an Alderman. And I took the seat of an Alderman that moved out of that area and left the vacancy when I started this. And it went a lot different than this. This is the best time we've had replacing somebody on the board in all the time I've been here. I thank the man for that and working with these questions and all the people. I thank Amanda for that and working with these questions and all the people that had input on this stuff. But we're trying, we're trying to do the best job here we can. In order to do it, we need the best people we can. So I too definitely want to thank each one of you for tonight's application and giving here and going to do this tonight. And I guess Amanda, in the next few days, will let us know results of it. Okay, thank you, Ed. And we will call this meeting adjourned.